So at 5:32, I'm going to call the Berlin School Directors Meeting to order. And I'm going to skip the reception of guests and agenda revisions and public comments, correspondence and future meetings because I want to skip right down to 2.1, which is elect a chairperson. So are there any nominations for chair for Berlin School Board?
So somebody has to make a nomination for position.
I nominate Sevira Fraser as the chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
You willing to serve?
Yes.
Thank you, Vera. Assuming there are any other nominations. So without seeing none, all those in favor, Vera Fraser serves as chair for Berlin School Board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you very much, Vera. I really appreciate your leadership.
Thanks. All right. So I guess I'll jump right back up and do 1.1 through 1.4.
Yeah.
Reception of guests. Steve Donkey, thank you. Agenda review and revisions. I don't have any.
I have one.
Okay.
Today we received a letter asking for a year of leave of absence. So that would be under action agenda, probably 6-5, whether to approve a year leave of absence. And I'm sorry, we just got it today, but we thought it was pertinent to bring it to you.
Okay. Don't let me forget that. I have it on here, but it's off to the side.
I've got it down here, and we have the letter right in front of us.
Okay. All right. Is that it for?
That's all for me.
Public comments and correspondence. I do have, I have a couple of things from Corinne. One of her questions is, is there a conversation going on with town regarding the school property doing something similar to Callis? And then she also had on here that Athens and Grafton are looking to do something, I'm assuming where their school building. So that was one piece, and I have to pass that around if you could look at it. And that's actually the warning for the Callis School for what they did last night?
Yes, but there's some question about what we've done.
Okay. So to share that piece and the other one was, she had a question on policies. So if the merger happened, will policies, will all the policies be adopted by the new board or will the policies that we currently have carry over?
The new board will have to adopt policies before July 1.
Okay.
That's on the work to be done.
I was assuming that's what was actually in the works.
Yeah, I've actually, a conversation started two weeks ago in my office between Krista and I since we're usually the policy folks, about trying to audit everything that's the same first. And most, almost all the mandatory policies are the same across all boards.
Right. I knew the word, that.
A lot of works.
The goal was to get them as close to the same. Okay. So that's all I have. And future meetings, I'm not sure that we want to set that date yet or we need to talk about it until we establish the time and date which is set.
Can I see that?
Yep. So 2.2, elect a vice chair.
I would nominate Nicole to be the vice chair.
Are you willing?
Yes.
All those in favor of Nicole being the vice chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any questions? Elect a clerk. So the clerk, for the most part, would take minutes if we don't have somebody here to do that. We typically always have somebody here to do that. And then there's usually.
Sometimes there's some.
A form.
There's usually a couple of things that get signed where just the clerk's signature's in a different place because the clerk's in charge of all paperwork for the school districts, so like bonds, and it just means that the clerk is approving that this is unauthorized. No, what we do with taking, take out of taxes, which we probably won't be doing with this borough board. So I don't think there's really much activity to be done by the clerk. And as Vera said, we usually always have attorneys with us as secretary.
Can I make a nomination?
Yeah, you can.
Okay. So I'll nominate Julie. I'll keep Julie a clerk. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Julie. All right. Establish the time and date of the regular monthly meeting, which is typically, so it's actually changed a little bit because we do our meetings for the full board sometimes in place of our local meeting here at Rowan. But I would still suggest to stay on the same schedule of our second Monday of the month at 5:30 here at Rowan unless they're at U32 for the whole board meetings, of which they do the carousels after U32. Unless anybody else has, if that doesn't work for people or have a different time date. I will say the Mondays, the second Monday of the month, I think, is on the calendar. So somebody in the central office can be here, which is why it works well to not change it.
Yeah, we have everything stacked.
Yes.
I think there's, yeah.
So we'll continue with the second Monday at 5:30 at Berlin. And the newspaper is, is it still the Times Argus?
We need the Times Argus, yeah. We use it then.
And the official postings, I believe, are the Town Purbs Office and the school building.
Schools, right. We just need to, we'll put it in any other places you want, but for this motion, two only.
Does anybody have any questions on that one?
What is the standard you use every, this is the same?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And it does go other places, just like, I know it's on our.
On the website.
School website. It's often on Front Porch Form. It is often on Corinne's News to Know.
It gets posted.
And I believe it's also sometimes on the Berlin Town page for our regular skinball.
And so the, for, I don't, sorry, but I don't know, do we take a vote for the second day on Monday, second Monday at 5:30? Vera?
No. Can I do those as a slate or do you want them separate?
You could do them as a slate if you want.
Okay.
And the Times Argus is, because we always use the Times Argus as the paper record.
Yes.
And two physi, it has to be two physical locations. We definitely do all the electronics. And it does get posted at Central Office and usually a couple other schools.
All right. So I'll make a motion for the time and date of the regular monthly meetings to be the second Monday at 5:30 at Berlin. And the newspaper on record is the Times Argus, and the locations for the official postings is the Town Purbs Office and the school. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Elect a representative and an alternate to the WCSU Executive Committee. So previously, when Chris Winters was the chair, he also was the executive committee person. I was his alternate. I have been going to the executive committee meetings since town meeting day so that Berlin has somebody representative, a representative there. There have been many meetings during the month of March into April. So it's definitely a time commitment, for sure. And the meetings, we've met kind of all over the place with what we can make work for the most people to get to the meetings. So there's no set time, set date right now. The meetings are.
They're sporadic because of a couple of issues.
So I'm not sure what everybody's time commitments can be and flexibility to be there. I'm willing to still do it. I'm willing to carry on. Right now, the main work that the executive committee is doing is the interim superintendent So I, I'm not sure what you guys can nominate to be the representative.
Talk about all of these different, different things first to see.
Sure.
Sure.
That might be a little, just because of both of us.
So the three voting members to the Supervisory Union Board.
That's a big.
Right. I mean, we're at a full board meeting. That's, we're, we're there.
Yes.
So negotiations will be very, there's not really anything to do right now because we just finished until.
Right.
The fall.
Can I just help a little bit here maybe? When you look at 2-8 and you see those three, those four committees, they are really, school quality and policy could be going, but they have not been meeting.
Right.
It was recommended back in January or February from the executive committee for the S U committees to kind of pause. If, you know, if merger happens, I don't see those committees coming together. If mergers stayed or put off a year, negotiations is going to probably be the one that's going to take the most amount of time because there's only a one-year teacher's agreement that we're going, we're being presented with tonight and any one-year DSP. Because there was a law established last year that stopped all, teach all contracts in the state from going forward. It's like the health care. So.
That's good to know.
So I would just say that I think you could, you could come back and look at that if the situation, you know, the current situation right now legally is that we are merging July 1. So I don't think there'll be much work there, but you could come back there and reappoint too. I agree with Vera. Vera, I think where the work is right now across the S U is at the executive committee, along with the Transitional Board and then the merge board.
Yep. And a member to the Transition Board is one, or can, is it an alternate to a one?
It's just, it's one because Chris Winters from stepping down from the board was appointed earlier automatically, and Vera was appointed. And so Vera's still on the board, is still a member of the Transition Board. So you have one more. You need to fill Chris's.
Oh, that's right. Okay, that's why I was, okay, got it, got it. Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you for asking, Nicole. Nicole's over on there. And the truant officer is always the principal.
Okay.
In our district.
So I think for less confusion, we will do a one at a time.
Yeah.
We can do the elect a representative and the alternate to the WCSU Executive Committee. So if somebody wants to make that nomination for two people, one for the main representative and then the alternate.
Can there be two alternates or only one alternate?
I've, in the 11 years I've been on the board, it's only been just the two people, the main and then the alternate.
Okay. Do you want to be the alternate, Nicole? Sure. But we need to elect a representative first. Right, correct?
I think.
I was going to say, so I could say.
Okay.
That we're going to nominate Vera to be the representative and Nicole to be the alternate.
Okay. Any other questions, Sabal? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Elect three voting members to the Supervisory Union Board. As we've said, that's pretty much a no-brainer. So it will be the three of us. And I will make the motion for myself, Julie, and Nicole to be the voting members to the Supervisory Union Board. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We still need to go through the process of electing for each committee. Is there anybody that wants to or is willing to do negotiations? Like Bill said, it's nothing current right now, and as of the way the law is, we're still set to merge as of July 1, but not knowing exactly where that's going to end up. Negotiations will pick up around October-ish.
Probably.
So around that timeframe is when you guys, when that committee would start meeting. Do I hear any interest from anybody? I will say, I just served on it, and the meetings at the beginning half were, they were early morning meetings. They were not like huge time commitments, but towards the tail end of it, it was time consuming.
Yes.
And it all varies depending on, like this time, we only had a one-year contract to deal with in health care. So we really didn't get into a lot of the nitty-gritty stuff, which I'm assuming will come up the following contract negotiations. So I do think if we don't merge, if that negotiations might be.
Again, I'll tell you where you go because we'll be.
Who knows? Yeah.
Anyways, so is there any interest from either one of you on that? I also am on the school quality committee, so I definitely, I'm hoping that if the merger doesn't happen, that we can find two more people to rely on to spread out the workload because it is, when you're only looking at three of us to do the workload, it's a lot.
I mean, I'm, I'm, my background, I'm more interested in transportation, like school quality as well, myself.
Okay. I'm willing to do negotiations if you want to take on school quality.
Okay.
Because I don't feel like I'm in a place where I can do chairwork, executive committee negotiations, and school quality. I got to give something up.
Yeah, I agree. It's hard.
Okay.
Okay.
So what did you just say? I was, I'm wanting to give up something. I'm willing to do negotiations. Nicole is going to, willing to do school quality. Would you be willing to do transportation and policy? Transportation's, they're not really doing anything right now.
It only comes when the contract comes in.
I can do tran, I mean, that's, I have a background doing that.
Yeah.
I could do that.
So like policy?
So I can do policy. Okay.
Unless it's very time-consuming.
Transportation isn't.
It's not. It's not, just when we do, just when we have to negotiate the contract or if we have an issue going that gets really serious. We haven't had one lately.
So you're going to stay with negotiations?
So I'm going to make a motion right now unless you want.
No, go for it.
Okay. So I'm going to give a motion to, so my motion is for myself to be on the negotiations committee, Julie on the policy committee, Nicole on transportation, and Nicole on school quality. Any other discussion about them? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Appoint a truant officer. Truant officer. And like Bill said, it's typically the principal. So I will make a motion for Erin Boynton to be the truant officer. Do you guys have any questions?
No questions.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Appoint member to the WCSU USD Transition Board. So there are several meetings coming up. It's definitely a time commitment.
Do you want me to list them?
Yes, if you know them, that'd be great.
I know them.
I have them on my phone.
They're next, they're tomorrow, and that one's at Callis from 4:30 to 6:00. So that's the 25th of April. The rest of them, we're trying to start at 6 o'clock, and they're on Thursdays, so it's the second and ninth.
And Wednesday.
And Wednesday, the 15th at 6:00 p.m. And we're trying to do them at Central Office for U32, just to scale them more centralized.
And this is to do what exactly?
So this is the Transitional Board. So the Transitional Board, and I'll try to do my best to explain the work that they're doing right now. Set the Articles of Agreement amongst all the invested schools. And they will get the warnings out for all of the upcoming, like one board, one budget that will go out to the towns.
Yeah, that's already going out.
And other than that.
They have to prefer, produce what's called, apply the Articles Agreement, the first draft of the budget for the merge board. They also, without, and we'll be talking about this more tomorrow night, the Transition Board has all responsibilities and authorities without the new merge board seated. So if something comes up for the merger to happen, which because we're so close in time, there are things coming up, that we'll be talking about some transitional issues tomorrow night that need to be tackled by this board to get things set so there's a smooth transition July versus into a merge system.
So this is to represent Berlin Elementary in that board?
Yep.
Not.
So there's 10, there will be once Berlin.
10.
It's 12 members right now in the Transition, the way they have Articles of Agreement. Once we get to a merge board, it's 10, it's two from each town. So there's a little nuance difference in the way the Articles were written. Give it to us.
Anything, anybody's interested? There's definitely a lot of meetings coming up, and the meetings that are coming up are actually the most important meetings because those are the ones that are, who are working on the Articles Agreement. Now, with that said, there was an Articles Committee that did a lot of the work and worked through a lot of those pieces for the Articles Agreement. But there's definitely some little nuances that still need to be worked out amongst the towns because there's definitely some difference in opinions on future representation, how many from each town. So there's definitely some pieces in there that, that work that will be done in the immediate couple of weeks is really important work. Because my hope would be once the Articles are written and everybody agrees to, that's.
Maybe sent out to a vote. They still have to, to elect a vote.
Right. So they'll still go out to the towns for vote. Okay. So are either of you willing to, that's why I want to.
Yeah, I mean, so I probably should know, but if George is already engaged in that discussion, it's.
He's not engaged.
He's not. Okay.
He's now as a representative of U32.
Okay.
I can, if you want me to.
Yeah. That would be tough, the time commitment for me right now.
Okay. Do you want to make the?
So I make a motion for Nicole to represent us on that board.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Thank you, Nicole.
Aye.
So like Bill said, we do have a meeting tomorrow night, which I understand is super last minute for.
I have something actually.
It is at Callis at 4:30. So if you can't make it, I totally understand. Okay. We will, either Krista or myself, somebody can get you whatever was discussed.
Did you get the, the packet through? I had asked Krista the.
For this one, we did, yes.
Yes, okay. Because I had asked her to make sure you were on the list, Nicole.
So we'll make sure somebody gets you whatever information we get tomorrow night at the meeting, so you'll have it for the following Thursday night's meeting.
Yeah, there's only one piece that's coming out right now. It's on the packet.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect. I was just going to go ahead and go on.
Yeah, that will give you the same packet. There was another one before that I, I want to make, I'll make sure tomorrow that you're on the group list of the Transitional Board meeting. But that is one that gives you the same thing because I sent it to all board members just to make sure.
I'm not sure about tomorrow, but I'll try.
Okay. Over here.
So moving on to the conservative agenda. Approved minutes of 2:13 and 3:04. So I'll make motion to approve the minutes of 2:13 and 3:04. I didn't have any questions on them. They looked fine to me. Did anybody else have any questions on the minutes?
No.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Discussion agenda, the driveway. It is so much better. Without even.
So literally, there was a, oh, I think Chuck, he went and did most of the workforce in here.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Yep.
And got two to three people just to go as an idea. We said, let's keep it under 15,000. So what you see is what's going to get patched from what it is to now. It was really waiting for the frost to come out. We had, you know, they're coming, when are they coming?
First full week of May, I think it's the, like the 6th or 7th. I know, it would have conditioned coat on the top. They're going to pitch it a little bit, so hopefully it won't build up as much water because that's, in my opinion, a big part of the problem is just pools of water there. We've been told by people in the business that what we have underneath is really good.
Really good, yeah.
So that's good to know. So, yeah, Chuck did a lot of the background work to get some costs, and, yeah, we needed to wait for the frost to.
Yeah. That was the big issue.
Yep. So they tore that up, obviously, and they repurposed that and recycled it to use again and put a fresh layer on it.
The only question I do have is when Greenmount Paving is here doing that stretch, do they have a patch that they can just patch those other two holes out there and still stay under 15,000?
We'll find a way to make sure those, so I thought as I drove in, we'll find, we'll find a way to make sure those other holes are.
I had talked to Chuck about it, and I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, we'll find a way. We'll find a way. The other thing I'll say is, you know, this is a, this is a year or two fix. It's not a long-term fix.
Yeah.
Okay. This is to get, this is to get us through.
Deep conversation about this.
I mean, we know, because we did, we drilled cores of that, of what's underneath there and to really fix it for 10, 12 years, we'll lose some seriously.
Right. But right now, it's a ton better than it was. I'd rather drive on stay mat than to drive on the way it was. So, so, yeah, let's just, on the next agenda, if we could get an update that doing something with the potfalls.
Well, I think, I think I'll be done by it. I hope it's done by then.
Right.
I hope they're full in. If they're not, you should be saying, what did you do, guys?
We can, we can always do that as a separate.
Just say to some, get some, we get some, we get some whole patch and get there.
Patch those.
So we'll get a fix.
And it's a day's worth of work, I'm assuming?
Yes, for that out there.
For that.
And they're not going to, traffic won't be stopped. People can still come and go. So I don't have to worry about not getting in or out, so.
I'm assuming they'll do half at a time. Roll it, put the stuff down, roll it, and then do the other half, so it's always accessible.
Yeah.
And do parents know updates on this? I would think they would love to know what's going on.
I think I put something in the last, I did put a correspondence out about that we're going to be working on fixing it. I think at that time, I wasn't that specific with this, but, yeah.
Parking lot itself.
So, yeah, so the parking lot, we've looked at a couple times in renovations here, and it can be done, but it's very.
So it can't be totally paved because of the wet dance on the backside, so you have to shorten it up some. I do know that.
Yeah, there's some pieces on that. There, you also get into stormwater issues.
I understand a lot.
Yeah.
That's what I do.
And then, and then it's usually been a cost factor. We do have, I mean, the school owns one of those DR graders, which usually keeps it pretty well during the summer. It's just, it's getting through, it's getting through our mud season right now.
And Chuck just did it.
Yeah.
I think he was working on it until then.
He did as much as he can, but, you know.
I just, as a new to the, I had no idea. How is a city like this at the time?
Is it money that's really the issue?
No, I mean, you.
Get it done, or is it?
We'd have to go, we'd have to go, we'd have to go get a bunch of engineering done. We need to do it for the whole driveway, but for that, we're probably going to incur, I don't know, what, about two, Nicole, you're civil engineer, so it's two or two times the driveway square footage to pave all that.
Right.
And we're going to have to put in drainage, and we're going to be in, we're going to be in a waste, we're going to be in a watershed permit and runoff area. We're dealing with that with other schools right now, where the Agency of Natural Resources is after us because of our runoff, our water runoff. We're working, we're on a phase two open road right now, and we're going into a. We're working, we're on a phase two open remedy right now, and we're going into a phase something at U thirty-two. And it gets quite expensive.
Yeah.
It would be nice to at least, maybe not necessarily paving it, but at a point where we could just put state mat down and have it packed down to a point where it doesn't get so muddy for this amount.
I, I would like to see it paved, it's going to help to upkeep of this building inside.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, we keep the dirt coming in, so.
Do we not? I thought that they looked at it when we did the bond for this, that we had got like a really good general idea of what it would cost to include that, did we not?
Just for the driveway. Just the driveway, the driveway itself, at that point, was a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
I think we always screwed away from the driveway because of the water issues.
The silt is coming in and all the.
I'm not sure, I don't know.
And that's what's getting our process.
I mean, we can definitely have a future agenda item to.
It's going to be our average agenda item in its current state, right? We talk about it every year, as we already do, don't we?
Well, the paving of that driveway has always been kind of separate from the roundabout. Or, or I guess the parking lot versus the driveway. Um, but if we're going to get quotes and look at it for, I'm not sure exactly.
I mean, the next, the next step would be.
It would be nice.
We would be, you know, we, we have an idea from when we did the part of the, um, you know, what it's going to cost for the driveway in the circle. We could probably just scale off the drawings, what that cost is per square footage cost, and say what that, and kind of extrapolate that for the parking lot. If we want it, but that's going to be, that's kind of back to the envelope pricing. If we adding more, then we're going to be engaging a civil engineer, because, you know, John, Timblegavon Blacker Design, who's been our architect, he does this by right way. He would sub it out to a civil. Uh, he's helped, we have a civil engineer on the track project of the U thirty-two right now, that's been really great to work with. Um, I was actually thinking that yesterday as we were starting kicking off the track project of their knowledge and what that would mean. We'd want to start spending money on, we'd have to start getting into a contractual relationship. John works by the hour for us right now to kind of give us advice and help us, but if we're going to get into that, then we'd get into a contractual places to start getting engineer. And serve it. Because they're going to start looking at what's the watershed and tell us about, you know, how close can we, what the Agency of Natural Resources is going to tell us. What are they going to tell us about stormwater runoff? And how do we, do we have to settle in pond, or do we have to sort of infiltrate? Because that's what we're dealing with the U thirty-two, we're having to build a small pond now by the Phil hockey field for stormwater runoff from the track.
That's so crazy.
You would think highway Walmart, you know, you know, a lot of paint areas around that. It's just crazy.
Yeah, I, I know, I just, I've been down there, two or three other schools.
So it's not, it's not impossible to not.
Right, you're right, you're right, Nicole's right.
It's very difficult, which I think is why it's always just stay dirt, get a gradient, bring in couples or whatever when it works. And that goes on. But, I mean, you definitely would hope with keeping the minutes in the school for sure. I guess we will look at all, all of it. Okay. All right. Four point two easement.
So this is an item that, if you look back at the notes from February, we've been working with a town of Berlin for sewer easement to replace the sewer line coming out of this building. And if you remember from the meeting, well, I don't think, Vera, you and I would remember, Nicole, I don't think you were there. Uh, but it's going to go out the back, go over, it's going to bridge the valley. They won't be able to come above ground out here for a little bit and then go back in the ground because of the gradient. Um, as a board, you asked for Tom, I forget Tom's last name, it works over, Tom and myself to work on easement. And we took care of that through our attorneys. So I have an easement here with me. That's the signature for the town of Berlin's easement. But if you can either appoint myself to sign it, or one of you can sign it, but it needs to be done in front of a notary. So we can't actually sign anything, so a bit of anyone around here is a notary right now.
Might be a spot.
So it's, it's a land easement that we had talked about. We started back in January with, I think it was December, January, so we're working on this. And this is a good thing to do, I mean, they're going to, we'll have a replacement sewer line, and we'll have an easement to come on our property and put that in place. And we're trying to do it when the kids aren't here. And that, where it's our hope, it may happen in the fall, but I don't think that schedule's been, unless you've heard anything new, Aaron, about what that schedule is. So this is a follow-up work that's from last year, or it's past year.
So some of the history is under three point two.
Yep.
Do, do you have any questions on this note?
No.
Okay. So being that nobody can notarize it tonight, I will make a motion to authorize Bill Kimball to sign easement on behalf of the Berlin School Board. Is that the correct wording?
That works, yeah.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Bill, could you send a copy of that easement to the three of us?
Yes, yes.
When you're back.
Yep.
In office.
Definitely.
Thank you.
It's a pretty simple easement, of ones I've seen in the past. This is about as easy as it gets.
Um, I actually had a question mark, and I actually meant to ask this earlier in the Agenda of Review and Revisions. Appointing two members to board under four point three, I'm not sure what that is.
That's where you have three members of a five-member board. We thought we'd give you discussion.
In case two, okay.
The discussion item to say, do you, would you like to talk about that?
It is all coming not to me now.
And you, Vera, you and I talked at the beginning of the month, and we kind of put this agenda together. So I can totally understand that that was just about.
If there were two that wanted.
If you knew of anybody, or how you wanted to go looking for two more members, because you're a five-member board.
So, does anybody have any, anyone that you know of that would be willing to serve from now until possibly June thirtieth? Or in the event that we don't merge, it would be through a meeting of twenty twenty? Any thoughts, anybody you can reach out to? I would just say, put, put it on the website, put it in, put it on the forum. The way I saw it was on the website. And then, I mean, it was not once I, you know, I kept having to see it. I'm just saying, that's a pretty very.
You're being real, you're being real.
That's how we are, we have so many things going on, but we're not, so. All right, this is another idea.
I think we have good words, so we can.
It might be another.
You can take care of that.
People might like that it's only temporary, you know, just for a little bit. We can definitely do that. All right. Reports to the board. So I don't know, I mean, a lot of the reports in there because we're still far off our regular meeting schedule.
Erin's pretty, when I read your report, yours is pretty up to date, you wrote that right around.
I added from, yeah, I added.
You added to it.
It goes back quite a way, but it's still more to me.
All right, so let's start with, um, we'll start with your report. And if there's anything you want to highlight in it, obviously, we've all read it.
And just so folks know, I provide a principal's report each board meeting and try to highlight things that have been, you know, exciting, different. Try to put some school-wide things, some student things, even some more staff, school-based logistical kinds of things, just to, you guys can move about certain things that we might be doing as a system. Any kinds of maintenance things that might not be on the specific banner of the agenda, I'll try to highlight a few things around that. So try to give a big picture of a number of different things on the board. So it is pretty long, just because I had kept what would have been the March meeting stuff in there. So there's stuff going all the way back to winter wellness, which was in February. So, you know, I don't have to read every single piece of it. We've had some, uh, unique things happen these last couple of months. The gentleman, whose name is William Harris, lives in Middlebury, he's a motivational speaker. He came to Berlin Elementary, spoke with grades three to six back in February. And I think everybody really enjoyed his message around ports of education and respect, just very motivating. And he came back for a classroom visit follow-up a couple of weeks ago, and the kids were happy to see him. So it was nice to have him here, talking about and reinforcing those important, important messages. One thing that I've been working on with a committee here at the school that I'll talk about, and it's under the MTSS EST part of my report. EST is Educational Support Team, MTSS is Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. And when I came on board, we had a handful of different committees that overlapped with what we were doing around student support, around, um, you know, how we look at student progress and, and how our systems of, of, of support work. So I helped decide that we really can benefit with having one team or committee to do this work because it's really a bunch of different people doing almost the same thing. So we've done a lot of work this year in talking about what our future student support structure might look like. We have a, an action plan, we'd be happy to share that at an upcoming board meeting. It really looks a number of different things around, you know, support in the classroom, tier-one classroom instruction, how we determine students for intervention, how it kind of flows with, if teachers have concerns about a student, how we incorporate all of the behavioral, behavioral work that we've been doing around PBIS and our, uh, systems of support around that. So it's kind of putting it all together, making it a little bit more understandable and cohesive across, across the whole school. So all the pieces just feel a little bit better. So that's been a lot of the work that we've been doing this year. And it's going to be a long process until we get to a more solid ground, but it's been underway. That's been good. I have some pieces about the facility in here. Things have been going well in regards to the facility over the breaks. And we've had a lot of student sickness this year, it's just been happening in all the schools. So they've done a really good job trying to go above and beyond with a little more of a deep cleaning type of, type of process. Done some painting over the, over the vacations. Our PTNA graciously has been improving our staff room. So we would like to thank them for some of the work that they've been doing there, not done yet, but it's really great that they've supported that, some of the changes there. We have some things from the summer that we're going to follow up on. The, the front entrance, I'm sure you've seen that on a rainy day or when we've had a lot of the snow melt, it ironically just drips right in front of the walkway and the entrance. We had the gentleman from the company come and look at it the fall, and he said, we definitely, you know, they definitely have to fix this. So the plan was that when the weather got better, they're going to come back and, and fix it. They, seems to be maybe something to do with the pitch of the water flow, I mean, obviously, so we'll be on top of that. And, um, what's that mentioned here? The driveway, obviously, we've been tackling as well. Another piece that we've, we've kept an eye on and actually have initiated to fix is when some of the, I guess, some of the, the air handlers, and it sounds like this was maybe a more historical thing, uh, would get, condensation would gather in them and would, some would, would leak. We had one in the conference room that was doing that this winter and tried to, tried to patch it for a short-term fix, didn't quite work. So we've decided we need a specialist to come in and fix that right, so it's not, not doing that anymore. If you look on the roof, we have this funny-looking, it looks like a greenhouse up there, but it's part of the, part of the, the air handling unit. So it will be fixed, we'll keep an eye on how that goes in the future with, with, with that stuff. So those are just some highlights, I don't know if anybody has any questions about anything else that's going on. End of the year is coming, and it's a good, busy time. A lot of end-of-year activities that are happening. Teachers working hard to think about all the things we got to do the end of this year, but also gearing up for some things for, for next year as well, so. Keep getting there.
So speaking of next year, so the SU is implementing a new math program.
Yeah.
The implementation will start right away with K through sixth grade. And this will transition them to the middle school, U thirty-two, for seventh and eighth grade. I'm hoping that there's, with this program, a closer link as to what they end with at the elementary schools and start with at U thirty-two versus having that gap that currently exists.
You know, you remember this, Vera, we've spent, we held off on getting a math program because we wanted to make sure the math curriculum was set. That was the standards that was used when looking at a math program, is that they had to fit our curriculum progression. That's pre-K through graduation. Ready Math has a middle school version that we're debating whether we go with it or not at the middle school, just because it's brand-new. And then that we're looking at that, we were looking to implement new programs, elementary, middle, and high, all next year. And the math committee, which is all math teachers, pretty much our math specialists, said, hey, let's slow this down a little bit and get it right.
Okay, that's, I guess that was the bottom line of our question.
So, but the, but you, the, I heard your bottom line is, is more as, do we have the continuum, so we don't have gaps? And what I wanted to assure you is that we built, we built, we built the, we haven't purchased where we're going. We, we might go with Ready Math for the middle school, and that's still being talked about, that still may happen this year. That decision hasn't been finalized, we, that authority to make that decision's been given to the committee of the teachers that are doing the work. They, but it's the math curriculum and the progressions that we've set up, those are all the standards for what we're setting, which is all based on the Common Core, so.
So it's still to be decided for the middle school, but it's been decided for K through sixth?
Right, we think, and we think Ready Math, I mean, that was a big discussion in there, and, you know, we talked about it, leadership team, Jen's kept us in the loop, about should we go to Ready Math all the way up to eighth grade, which may happen. I, I don't think it hasn't been said it won't happen, I just don't think there's been a conclusion of that. Because they said they built their elementary first, so it's already been out in schools for about a year and a half. And this is the, this is what usually happens in any curricular area when standards are set. It takes about five to eight years for the programs to move to meet the standards that have been set nationally. So we're, we're four years, four to five years now with a Common Core. Other programs said they were Common Core aligned, but there was just tweaks to old programs that weren't there. We're starting to see now the new programs come about that are truly aligned to the Common Core progression. We'd like it, you know, and it, it's a resource, it's a tool, it's probably sixty-five to seventy percent of what the curriculum is. There isn't a program out there that has everything, they just don't exist.
Does anybody else have any other questions in the principal's report?
I do. The MTSS EST, is that Parents and Teachers, or is that just teachers, the team, this team?
In-house, it's just an in-house team.
In-house team.
So I have teacher, special educator, nurse, guidance.
Okay. And then, what's the Orton Gillingham?
Yep, so that is a, um, an approach to, to reading. A lot of, there are a number of, of actual programs that are based on work that Orton Gillingham had done years ago. The best way to, to describe it is it's more of understanding the English language at its core when it comes to how words are. core when it comes to how words are built. So it's more of a phonics-based look at, I don't want to say instruction, but just an understanding of how our English language words are put together. I took the course a couple of years ago, and it was one of the best courses I'd ever taken. And it's really, this is meant to not say that I'm expecting teachers to all of a sudden, you know, we're not going to necessarily say we're going to move towards something that we're going to program around phonics, but more of that they understand the core of teaching this language to the kids. So throughout the next few years, I want everyone to at least go to this introductory training course to just get a taste of what it is and what it could offer if they choose to go a little bit further, because you can, you can do more through this program in regards to training. So next year, I do a number of folks that would like to go, and it will just help with their understanding of reading.
Any other questions or comments? Phil, do you have any highlights of anything on the committees that maybe are not represented in this packet?
I'm going to talk about negotiations when we get to the action.
Yep.
Executive Committee is in the packet.
It's in the packet.
School policy and policy haven't met, so I wouldn't have anything on that. And then I can do the finance when you're ready for that.
Okay. Why don't we jump to page twelve for finance?
So I'm going to slow this down and explain this a little bit here. On page twelve, you see what, we look at, we call it our fund balance sheet, and it takes a look at where are we in relativity. At the top of the page, you will see the after audit beginning balance of $300,207. So for fiscal, for school year 2017, 2018, so last July 1st, we ended, after we went through our auditors, of that fund balance left. And what the fund balance is, is the amount of money that's in the checking account, and loosely, I'm saying checking account, but in the account for Berlin School that says this is the amount of money, the cash we have right now. And we look at that and say, okay, for the next year, the voters in Berlin give authority to the school board through an item that's done every year at annual meeting, that the school board has the authority to spend that audited fund balance. So it's on top of the budget as they see fit. It's actually a really generous thing the voters do. So it's not targeted towards a certain use, the board can determine that. What you'll see after that is we start looking at the current year, and are there, these are all projections below this. Laurie Beebo, her projections are usually about in the ninety-eight percentile correctness, if not higher. So they're usually pretty accurate, but they're, if we see changes in revenue, we'll see them in that first part, or changes in expenses. So, for example, and we do big true-ups three times a year, September, January, and right about now, April, May. We're getting ready to do it for May. If something happens that we don't foresee either a building expense or a student expense you might, or staffing expense, you might see those as other months. So the reason in September is because we usually have new staffing and we readjust all the payroll. But you'll see under revenue, interest income, we thought that it was actually, our revenue there would go down about $551. You'll see there's a balance to that for the expense, that's maybe a bad one. But reserve for healthcare insurance for recapture, that was done the previous year. The board, Board Board Action back in September 2017, this was responding to some state legislation. They set aside fund balance money to be expended so we didn't have to budget it for this current fiscal year. So you see a deduction of the overall fund balance out of that $303,000 of $9,760. Okay? You'll, you start, that's the revenue changes. The expense changes down below are, I'm going to go down to the second line, salary benefit update, school-wide primary health insurance. It's a negative because it wasn't as high as we thought it was going to be. Because when we, when we put in for personnel, sometimes we have to make estimates because we may not know who we're hiring, or we may not know their benefits. So it's actually saved us $6,900 there in health insurance. So you'll see that up and down through there, and we can go back and talk about any of those. At the bottom, you get what is the current fund balance projected at the end of this year? And Julie, I heard earlier, Bureau's kind of giving you a quick tutorial on this. We're at $202,557. That's our projected, that's what we think it's going to be June 30th, 2019. So this is a projected fund balance. We, and that, you see the nut right next, and that percentage of 5.8% is off the voter-approved budget, which is right above a $3.5 million, kind of above and to the right. We have a target that we usually try to keep about 4% of fund balance for a school this size. Sometimes those changes depending on the size of school, either bigger or smaller. One of the things that we do, that the board took action on earlier in FY '17 and '18 to, so we don't have peaks and valleys in the technology equipment funding around the building. We make it so it's one constant cost every year. And so we kind of made our own little reserve fund there. So that's set aside. I actually know some of that's going to get used for next year because just we have life cycles of technology. So the current fund balance, if you take that $22,000 out, is $179,787, which you see below, it says it's $39,350 above the 4% target. Okay? I'm going to stop for a minute, and I just told you a lot really quickly, but just kind of how this reads. And usually each month when there's a new line added, we go over what those lines are for. Okay, so we're projecting that that, that's what will be kind of, that will be in the account at the end of this fiscal year. There's also on page thirteen, other special discretionary funds that have been set up by the voters or through grants. The biggest one is a capital fund. And this, what you see above the new bond construction part, so all these boxes, if you look above these boxes right here, is the current capital fund. We came in this year with $350,000, $135,000 and change. We had, we transferred extra in, the board did action earlier on this year along with what came in. We had a little bit of expense, we had some transferring from the bond, what was left over in the construction. So at the end of this year, we're projecting, and currently, right now, we do, have $292,111 in the capital fund. So as we're talking about the driveway out there of $185,000, that's the area I'd be looking at, because we don't have it in our budget right now to pay for something like What is down below, and this will all go away after this fiscal year, but is the bond that we've used for the renovations here? So we had to track that a different way. And what we had left over at the end of the whole bond was $6,343 we didn't expend on the bond. That just went right up in the capital fund, because what, that wouldn't really do anything to the payments that we're doing, and we're allowed to do that. Questions on that capital fund? That's one to understand, that's how we take care of it, we upkeep. Outside the supplies, maintenance, we have about $25,000, I think, in repair and maintenance every year, but when there are things that need, they're larger, we have to go to that. Down below, you start to see grants. Those are usually in and out. We have our food program, which I'm going to talk about on another page, and then we have student activities from, which is anything from trips to book drives to, you have to help me, what else? We run through student activities.
Athletics.
Athletics, yeah. So all that kind of runs its own little fund. These are, if you want, my analogy for this is these are different accounts that run.
That's helpful, thank you.
Too much, too little?
No, it was helpful.
Okay. If you go to the next page, you'll see the food service, and Vera, it was very helpful when I, when I came aboard seven years ago to really say, "Hey, we need a better accounting." And you helped us get to this page, Vera, when you said, you know, "We need to know more about the food service program." So we, in this next page, you'll see revenues at the top, and we do multi-years of what's been happening to the projected for this year, at the end of this year, FY 18, 19, which is all the way on the right. So you'll see revenue coming in and expenses going out. And you'll see that this year, right now, we're projecting that we're going to have, without any help from the school, we would have a twenty, I'm down where it says profit-loss operations A minus B, is about $25,000 below. What we had made when we budgeted for this year, we planned on $25,000 of support coming from the school budget. So right now, we're right on target to meet that piece. This is, as, you can see, the past two years, we've had $13,000 and $18,000 of actual support. So it's actually increased the bottom line fund of the food fund, which you see down below, beginning fund balance and fund balance. We'll know more on true-up at the end of this year. I think, last thing, we had a food audit, a nutrition audit by the state, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, which was mainly fiscal, but it was our menu audit as well, and we were doing pretty well. But it just hasn't hit these projections, because this projection hasn't been adjusted since January or February, I don't think.
When they did that food audit too, they added in the popcorn program, just FYI.
Yeah.
They did. I was actually here popping popcorn in May.
Oh, good.
They were not, they were like, I'm not sure that oil is really good. Actually, it's not that bad.
So if you look up in revenues, you'll see federal reimbursement for lunch and for breakfast. And so that's the money that we get for the beds.
Good to know.
Good to know.
Very, very strict. So we're actually doing pretty well here at Berlin when we look at it compared to other schools on meal served per day, per FTE. The seventy-six, like up at U 32, were at fifty-nine or sixty per FTE that work. So we're running, we're serving quite a few meals for the FTEs. We are doing a good job. That's all the way down to the bottom. We try to track, you know, we try, that meal served per day per FTE is the bottom line of the second to lowest box. And then we look at enrollment and percentage of kids eating lunch and breakfast. So Berlin's got a pretty high percentage compared to most of the schools that are eating lunch in the school. And you've got pretty good, so all in all, the food program's really made a turnaround since I've been here.
Yes.
Yeah. So that's my fiscal report. We will, we're closing down right now. Laurie and Erin have been going through, we talked about purchase orders earlier, Julie and I explained the system. There, it's not that we can't get stuff right now, but we try to say, "Hey, we're getting to the end of the year. If there's an open purchase order for something, we need to figure out if we need to pay any more bills toward, or let's get it shut down."
Laurie is very efficient, and she likes all paperwork in by May.
Yep.
So don't be spending any money after that.
And she gets pressure from Laurie Beebo, the business manager in my office, like, "Let's get this thing done."
It better be like a necessity to have after that.
So that's my financial report. We're glad to take any questions, concerns, comments.
Looks good. Thank you, Bill. So we do have the action agenda, but I want to jump back up to 1.4 for future meetings, because we went over that, so that we don't. So I have our regular main meeting would be May 13.
Yep, that's why I have to.
June is a full-board meeting month?
Yep.
Is it?
So I believe that that's happening the first Wednesday. Let me get to my calendar, Vera.
Okay.
So that, we'd have May 13, that's the Berlin, and then we would have June 5.
The carousel?
Would be a carousel at U 32.
Yep.
Okay?
And then we typically don't meet in July. I'm sure things will come up.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm going to say it's going to, it's, but we're going to have to get further down the road.
Right. So just for, those are the two that I have for now, that I would definitely be on as regular meetings.
We said June 15?
June 5.
For the carousel, but what about the Berlin?
Usually with the carousel months, we don't.
That's right.
It'll be at U 32.
Oh, great. Like that. That's right.
Now back down to the action agenda. So I'll make the motion to authorize the Eastman Agreement with the town of Berlin. Actually, did I already?
You did that already.
I did that already.
Right, Tiffany, we did that?
Yes, we did, because I authorized you to sign it, though. Approved teacher contract for academic year 2019-2020 as negotiated by the negotiations committee. You guys need some information about that, which the biggest piece was healthcare and the salary increase. I'm not sure exactly how much.
I can go forward.
Okay.
Yeah. So in the teachers' contract, the, there were members representing every board that were on a negotiating team, and we ended a 3.1% increase for salaries. And for healthcare, we had something that was cost-neutral to the teachers, I caught that, cost-neutral to the district and to the teachers. We have a, we base everything off of what's called the CDHP Gold Plan, which is our four plans by our healthcare provider, VHI, which is Vermont Education Health Initiative. This plan has a high deductible of $2,500 for a single and $5,000 for a family or two person, but those are supported by healthcare reimbursement accounts. Those accounts were split at 90% paid for by the district and 10% by the individual, where the employees had the first dollars in, they had to pay the first 10%. It was being hard, it was hard to manage and a hard transition for our teachers. And so what was agreed upon, and that, and the premium split was 82% by the district and 18% by the teacher. It was agreed upon at the negotiations that the premiums would actually get to be 80/20 with the HRA fully funded by the district. That was seen as almost a cost, a zero shiftance cost. I mean, there was, there were some costs in there, but very little compared to the $11 million worth of teacher contract we were negotiating. So there was agreement to split it to become 80/20 and 100% of the HRA covered. And so that, and these are one-year contracts, so there's nothing else done in the teachers' And that, this been ratified by all other, the other five, other six boards, because the supervisory unit had to ratify for teachers that were the supervisory unit office.
It was actually, it was a pretty, when we got to the healthcare piece, that was the biggest case. It was, because it was almost a cost-neutral on both ends, it was kind of a no-brainer, because the old system was very administrative-heavy for both central office and the third-party. So it was a benefit all the way around to do this.
Yeah, so it's a third-party.
It was a good, a good change for everybody, which I think everybody benefited from it too, which is good, to have a cost-neutral and everybody benefited. Any other questions about negotiations, please? I do have. So I will make a motion to approve teacher contracts for the academic year 2019-2020 as negotiated by the negotiations committee. There's no further questions? All those in favor, please? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Approve ESP contract for academic year 2019-2020 as negotiated by the negotiations committee.
Want me to go with that?
Sure.
Okay. So this was, we met with the, ESP stands for education support personnel. So this covers, in this building, the par educators, the food service workers. Chris in the office doesn't, Lori is not covered because of some of the work she has to do for Erin. Our custodians are not bargaining in this building as well. The, this contract has a 3.5% salary increase, and the healthcare followed exactly what the teachers did. They actually joined for the healthcare negotiations, so we were doing both contracts at the same time. We also did change a few working conditions in here, some being we identified a new class of employee, not a new class, but a recognition of folks who are doing behavior intervention supports and personal care for kids, which is a little above what a par educator does, so there's some support money in for that. There's some technology supports for personnel, our par educators in school have a hard time getting to, you know, we're doing, as you guys know, and you do, too, in your lives, everything's going through technology. So it's only right for us to support them with a device, electronic device to do that. And those are the major pieces, Vera, I forget what else I'm missing from that contract. But it was a pretty good contract negotiations. We did it in one night.
Yeah, I just, I had the, the healthcare, which they did with the initial negotiations. We actually combined it one night. And then the salary increase and the technology piece with some type of Chromebook or something like that.
So you can do their, do email. We have a bunch of applicants who we use for personnel, like SubFinder and tracking when people are out. Yeah.
So I'll make the motion to accept, to approve the ESP contract for academic year 2019-2020 as negotiated by the negotiations committee. No other questions about that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I'm sorry, Floyd, I passed it around to Julie, did you sign?
I didn't sign it. I didn't know you wanted me to sign it.
You can sign anywhere as long as you feel comfortable with signing it. We do get a chance to give any questions. All right, 6.4, accept retirement.
So our dear colleague, Katie McHugh, is retiring from outstanding professional service in Berlin.
Very sad to see her go, totally understand.
Yeah. Katie McHugh?
So I will make a motion to accept Katie McHugh's retirement with many thanks for her years of service to Berlin and to our community, well, school and community. Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I wish her well in her retirement.
We'll try to make sure your, three of you are included in knowing when, sure there'll be something here in the building. She's out, she's out right now.
She is, because I saw her when she was coming in on her crutches, one of the nice dates when I was working on the yearbook, and I got a chance to see her, so.
Yeah, we have, we have to find a way of recognizing her. We'll do that.
Perfect. Approved board orders.
So we had a 6.5 that I asked.
Oh, yes, yes.
We just received a.
I knew I forgot.
Do you want to talk to this?
You wrote it. But it was off to the side, it blends in.
No, no, I think you just say, no, it's an ask for leave of absence if they're wanting to go into more reason than might have required executive session.
So I got a request from Kimberly Ferrone for a one-year unpaid leave of absence starting in July this year to next year. It's her request. Entertain any questions or?
And she, as you know, she was on the board to approve a sabbatical for her, and then she decided she needed to not use that sabbatical. And this would have been the year she would have had sabbatical.
So we can't really, so we can accept it, but we can't really ask any questions when it's a personnel issue like this without going into executive session. So if you guys have questions, we can certainly make the motion to go into executive session.
My questions wouldn't be personal. They would be more about, so how do we cover that work with her absence? Like, how do we talk about that, or do we?
So we, we go out, we'd be in a hiring process for a one-year replacement. And it might be that someone from the school, and I've talked to Erin about this, so he, I have better knowledge than I, it might be someone in the school does that work for a year. And we hire for their position? Or he says, let's go out and look and see what's out there? And the principals always have that, they have that call, it's not my call. But we basically, somewhere there's going to be a one-year, one-year, one-year contract for a teacher, someone with a teacher license, because we're looking for someone with a teacher license, so.
And so how does that go against, does she have a contract? So it pauses her contract for that year or gives the leave of absence?
Basically leaves her slot. By the board granting a one-year leave of absence to any personnel, you're saying, okay, you have a job to come back to.
Right.
But for a year, you don't, you're not working here, you're not collecting any salary. In our contract, as I referenced a little bit earlier, so I might have gone too fast, we have provisions for a sabbatical leave where for four years, you can put away a fifth of your salary. And your fifth year, or so, sorry, four years, you put away a fourth year salary, and for that fifth year, you get all that.
And you can go on sabbatical.
And you go on sabbatical. That's something that's in our master agreement still, so.
Is that what Mrs.? Yes.
She took a leave like this.
She took a leave.
She took a leave like this. We have two teachers up at U 32 right now that are on one, one to two-year leave and one's a one-year leave, but something like this. Yeah, looking for salary, they're looking to do something else for a year.
So whatever qualifications she has, would it match the same things?
Yeah, yeah, that's what we'd be looking for. She, since she does our math teacher leader program, math interventionist, we've been looking for someone who's highly skilled in math instruction.
Okay.
Do you have somebody in mind within the school that would like to transfer to that position for a year, or you haven't really thought about it yet or don't know?
I have to reflect a little bit more. I mean, this is. Yeah, I mean.
Usually, usually I don't like things on the action agenda that haven't been moved.
I mean, I haven't, yeah, I've been skiing today.
No, sometimes, I mean, you know right away, okay, I have this person in mind, I know they can fill out a slot for here and hire for the other position easier than a math specialist.
I mean, it makes me think of what could possibly be, so I just had to think a little bit more.
Especially with the implementing the new math program. I'm sure the support will need to be there for some of the classroom.
Yeah, and we're, we're, we're here quite a bit as a district math coach, so that's, I'm confident with Ellen's support.
She's a really valuable asset, is my comment.
So I'll make a motion to accept or approve the leave of absence. Do you want a name or just as big as that?
I think we're fine without the name.
Okay.
I think that helps, I always think that helps personnel, that's my default, you know? Fair.
So we'll leave it as approve a one-year leave of absence. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the board orders in the amount of $39,702.68. Are there any questions on the board orders? Not? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Future agenda items.
I heard the parking lot, you'd like to know, I mean, I, literally, I can be the one to do that, I know how to do it, to scale it off of the costs and get as work with it, just to kind of give you a ballpark of.
So, yeah, I definitely think the parking lot should be on there. So May will definitely have an Act 46 update because I'll be, we'll have met multiple times. So we probably, even, we will be at a point where we can bring some of those articles of agreement so we can start having discussions as a board, too. Well, two of us will be on the committee, but at least so that you can even look, because they will go out to the town for a vote. So the more we understand them and the more we know what's going on and communicating with people, the better understanding they'll have, so.
Erin, do you think we'll have the open positions on that? Yeah, so we'll probably have a person to come for, I mean, we'll bring in a candidate to, not the actual person, but for teaching, for the three, four teaching position that's open right now.
All right, is there any other piece that I'm missing for future agenda items?
Is there any other things you normally do in May that's nothing to do with transition that we haven't done?
We have a yearly calendar that we've been using for years.
Okay.
That was developed when I first came in, and so Krista Mativier, my admin assistant, she always looks at that. And what happens for Nicole and Julie to know, we sit down at the chair, Vera, Erin and I will sit down the week we had before, and we actually, I usually have that calendar up on my laptop and say, okay, what have we always done in May?
That's good to know.
Yeah, it's not like we're making this up.
No, no, I don't think you did.
And then we also, we also take the agenda from the previous May and look at it and say, okay, what was on that? You know, and then.
I just know you've been talking about the merger so much.
Yeah. No, but no, it's a really fair question, how do you keep yourself organized so you don't miss things? And that's a really fair question. So I think I was a little, maybe too sarcastic on response, but.
So the other thing for future agenda item will be update on superintendent search because we'll have met the second for executive committee. So we'll have an update on that. And we should probably have a further discussion as to where Callis is at, and you would have to come with that information, do I think, as to this piece? If we could put that on our May agenda as well.
Definitely could do that, yep.
What kind of wording do you want for that?
Why don't you say building access, community building access and easements?
Perfect. That works? Thank you. Am I forgetting any? I don't think, I think that covers everything.
Yeah, that is.
All right. Board communication. Obviously, there's a lot of changes going on, and we've never really had, like, one person's going to take care of front porch form consistently across, and they'll definitely post a front porch form so that those pieces come from central office. But I don't know that we've ever really had a set designated board person that has taken on that role of communication piece. So this is something that we can think about until our May 13 meeting. But if somebody is willing to take on that role as we are rolling out, like interim superintendent, changes within our school, the merger, it'd be greatly appreciated if somebody wanted to take on that communications piece as to, even if you type up something weekly and send it to Lori, she'll send it out through the, it's not Blackboard connected, or what is it now?
Internet campus.
Internet campus. So if that's something that interests you or that, you know, sparks, I would love to do that. I think it's a piece that we as a board, we ebb and flow through certain things, like when it's bond time, when we wanted to do renovations, we were great, but then we kind of fell off. So if there's, and maybe it's one of those we rotate through, and once a month, one of us takes on the task or something. I'm just looking for ideas, so just think about it for a month and revisit that in May. And if there's nothing else, then I think we are ready to adjourn. Does anybody else have any? That was a really fast meeting, considering we haven't met for a really long time. So I'll make a motion to adjourn by 6:56.
Thank you.